Okay. Go.
Okay, good evening, welcome back. It's still Monday, December the 16th. This is the joint session with the local development finance authority, the City of South Haven City Council. So at this time I will do the roll call for the city council.
Chris Campbell.
Here.
Clark Ruber.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Steve Schlock.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Patricia Wilkins.
Here.
Scott Smith.
Here, and I just welcome to the LDFA board. Thank you to Jim and Patricia ahead of time, looking forward to your presentation.
Here.
Tom Urban.
Here.
Tom Fleming.
Here.
John Frost. Mike Henry. Andy Clavens. Gail Patterson Gladby.
Present.
Kathy Pyle. Joe Reiser. Grant Spencer.
Here.
Stephanie Timmer.
Okay, so Mr. Mayor, the purpose of the joint session is to receive a presentation on the strategic plan. We have Mr. Jim Hettinger here tonight. For anyone who's interested, you can find all of this information on the city's website. We will have the presentation on the overhead screen, you can watch. Should any member of the two boards have questions, this is intended to be a discussion. So feel free to jump in. I would just ask, if you have questions or comments, speak loudly, so everyone in the audience can hear. With that, Mr. Hettinger, are you ready?
I hope so.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Evening.
Happy holidays. First of all, introduce my partner, Patricia Mullen. Without his assistance, the graphics in this whole thing wouldn't have worked out very well. But this is the one and only time you'll probably see both of our names in the front of the report. As I said at the very beginning, when you awarded this contract, we wanted a plan that spoke to South Haven. We're not there to advertise ourselves or anything else. This is your plan, and considerable input was gathered from residents and citizens of not only South Haven but of the area. And hopefully, five years from now, you'll still be using this plan. It's not the practice, unfortunately, of the public sector, but hopefully, we've got some staying power here. You will still, five years from now, say, "This was South Haven's plan. It was something that the people of South Haven worked very hard together to produce." Second observation is, you won't see the word retention in here very much. And retention is the most basic economic development activity. But you've got a city administration and some elected leadership here that recognizes the utmost importance of retention of the existing business base. If you look on the city's website and see the promotional video, you'll see a number of business people talking about how helpful the city has been. That's very good retention. I can't tell you to do anything there that you're not already doing and doing quite well. So understand, though, that that's gotta be the strain of economic development that goes forward. You take care of your own first, and if you're good enough at doing that, you will attract others, and those that you have helped will speak positively on your behalf. The third thing is, this is kind of a non-traditional plan in that we have crunched together some tactical goals along with some strategic goals. Justification for that being, you're gonna have to have something in place to undertake some of the strategies that we're gonna recommend to you. And probably between now and March, as a group, we'll have to make some decisions about what vehicle we do and how we do it. Otherwise, non-traditional, those of you that have seen the report will know that there's no magic bullet in there. We looked hard for one, though, and I pretty much believe in niche-based growth in a community. If you can occupy a spot nobody else has, and you can exploit that spot, it brings a lot of wealth, it creates a lot of wealth in the community. It's not to say it's not there, we just haven't found it yet, but we'll keep looking. In the plan itself, there's a pretty healthy appendix section, and there's a reason for that. I wanted you to be familiar with the literature that we used in the development of this plan. We did some pretty extensive surveying, and we related a lot of the survey results to existing literature in economic development. There's a lot of studies of this area. The Upjohn Institute is currently carrying on a study, so data is readily available. It's nothing that you really have to spend a lot of time looking for. The only thing I was really looking for is where those data points converged. If the city housing study said something, I'd look in the master plan for it to make sure that it was reinforced. Those convergence points, though, give us the strengths, the weaknesses, the threats, and the opportunities. But, you know, you can have a purely data-driven plan, but that's the 50,000-foot view of the community. It's much better to be down with people, the boots on the ground, and hear what they have to say, and what they think about their community, and what they think their opportunities are. And there's a couple of bar stools in South Haven that probably have gathered no dust because I have a form of inquiry that I call ground truthing, and that's sitting at the bar, asking the person next to you questions about South Haven. And I've learned a lot that way. So we have a lot of data, but we have a lot of human input, human intelligence, and that, to me, is the most important. Throughout the plan, we'll refer to various economies, especially those that are important to South Haven. One of them is the consumption-collaboration economy, and the reason why these are mentioned is you've been impacted by it, and in some cases, impacted in a rather negative way, and we'll get to that. But the consumption-collaboration economy holds that there are items out there of value, a power saw. You buy one, you may use it 15 minutes for the entire year, and the rest of the time it sits there gathering dust. So what you do is you rent it to somebody. So you're consuming through your renting to somebody, you're collaborating, and if you follow this through, this leads to rental housing, rental, Uber, Lyft, companies like that. Sharing of capital assets to drive value, consumption collaborative economy. Second is the gig economy, and this is the way increasing numbers of Americans work. They do gigs. And the World Economic Forum just released a paper about the gig economy, and they say it's worth about $200 billion in gross value right now, but by 2023, it will double. And this means that more and more Americans will be working gigs in the future. The gig economy is also part of what they call the Fourth Industrial Revolution, which is not what you make, not what you serve, but how you make it, what inputs you develop, and how those inputs are mixed together to create a product. Finally, the longevity economy. We don't really mention it, per se, in there in any great detail, but it has to do with people living longer, being healthier, being talented, and having time on their hands. And in the case of South Haven, we'll talk a little bit about what a traditional economic developer would call an aging economy. I'm gonna call it longevity economy, because I think there's a lot of value there. Seniors are living longer, they're healthier, and I've met a number of people since I've been working here in South Haven, retirees from my previous life, and there's at least two in the audience here tonight, who, I think, have a lot to contribute to a community like this. We discussed before the meeting, and all of us were still fairly lucid, so there may be some opportunities there. You last did a strategic plan in 2004. What has changed? The three economies I talked about were not recognized in 2004. Globalization, in about 2004, maybe 10% of your total business establishment had some global exposure. Today, it's well over 33%, and that means there's a lot out there that is not under your control, but at the same time, you're somewhat under a demand to learn as much about those connections as possible. Because you do have employers here in town that are owned by overseas interests, and while they seem to be very happy in South Haven, their business is going well in South Haven, it's still something to keep an eye on. Information technology is very much upon us. We just talked about the collaboration-consumption economy, but Airbnb, Lyft, Uber, vacation rental by owner, all of those were developed as a result of software applications coming out of the information technology movement. Finally, deployment of human capital. We'll talk about this in great detail, but this is one of the most significant changes since 2004, the way we work, the way Americans work, and the way Americans work in their communities. So under the SWOT analysis, it is interesting. Strengths come to mind readily, fast and furious. That's good, because it was a lot better experience than the weaknesses. And there's far more strengths than there are weaknesses. And the obvious strength that sets South Haven apart from most any other community is the presence of Lake Michigan, sixth-largest freshwater body in the world. It's probably South Haven's reason for being, in that the timber industry, lumber industry was here, food processing, tourism, and all of those pursuits, the lake had a significant role, and it will have a significant role going forward. And we're calling it a strength, but we're gonna call it some other things before we're done tonight, because we all know we've got some problems. You are a compact, walkable community, and I've never seen anything like it in that regard. The community assets, outdoors, everything is equally or easily accessed. The mayor, the superintendent of the public schools have been working on community recreation. This kind of setting lends itself to good community health, and the assets are there. On May 6th, the City of South Haven was designated a Pure Michigan Trails community, and why not? You've got 14, no less than 14 trails in South Haven, six-hour water trail, one-hour water trail. I would like to recognize Peter Trillo, who's here from the Southwest Michigan Land Conservancy. Those of you that follow things closely will know that the Land Conservancy's been working hard on the Pilgrim Haven project, and then the Porter property right next to it. So you're gonna have even more natural assets here, some of a highly unusual nature, at your disposal as a community. And the theme of, I think, health comes forward here when you think about walkability and open space and land preservation. Pete, any comments to make? Sorry to put you on the spot.
You know, working in South Haven has just been a pleasure and incredibly productive, great place to do business.
I'll try and one-up that. South Haven is also a maritime community. Port, marina, historic district, museum. You have all of the features or characteristics of what we would call a themed area in economic development, and there may very well be some sort of change in water-based technology here in the future for which this port is well-adapted. When you think about driving to Chicago, for example, Interstate 80, 94, the congestion, the trucks, the pollution, and all of that, it's been off and on through the years. People have toyed with the idea of cargo across Southern Lake Michigan via barge traffic. Benton Harbor's been one that's looked at that, I know because I helped him about 35 years ago. But the last I've heard, Muskegon was looking at something similar to that. But it's important for South Haven to keep in mind that its history is based in maritime commerce, and that there could very easily be a bigger future in that as well. You enjoy great proximity to major markets. Businesses in South Haven can see products delivered to 60% of the consumer Canadian and American populations within 24 hours. You have great proximity to major educational institutions. Within three hours, you've got everything from Northwestern and north of Chicago to the people in Ann Arbor. So all kinds of educational options are available to families living here, but we might also look at a couple of the universities to help us out with community development problems. You have excellent proximity to private colleges, Kalamazoo College, Hope College, Andrews University, which has had a small aviation program, and you think about that in relation to your airport, and Western Michigan University's College of Aviation, and, you know, there's possibly a project there. Community optics, site selectors, when they come into your community, you wanna see that it's neat and tidy, and I think the city's done a great job of keeping its gateways neat and tidy. The downtown is neat and tidy. And the reason why that's important is that these are the two areas with which the outsider will first come into contact with a community, and that forces that first impression. So a clean, tidy gateway, clean, tidy downtown makes a favorable impression. I think it was Einstein that said, "You don't get a second chance to make a good first impression." So as long as there is attention being paid to this, the people from the outside, hopefully, will have that first interaction with South Haven, will be positive. The downtown is healthy, certainly busy in the summertime. Lots of people that I've talked to complained about the parking, but I will tell you, I did economic development in Battle Creek for a long time, and they gave me the downtown, and I was praying for parking problems. People would say, "There's nothing going on down there." Ergo, there's lots of parking spaces. So it's kind of a counterintuitive thing. People have complained, "It's hard to find a parking space downtown," and I say, "Yeah, but if there was nothing downtown, it'd be easy for you to find a parking space." Leadership and key institutions. Not to pat Brian on the back too hard, but I think you've got a great city administration, the Chamber of Commerce has a healthy leadership situation, and I've been pretty impressed with your visitors guy, too. He's been very helpful to us along the way and knows his business. Not appearing in the data, but showing up in a number of the surveys, is something called the rural high-context culture, and that simply means that people who live together, know each other's families through the generations, have an easier way to communicate. And you can, as an outsider, you can kinda see it, but many people contend that this leads to efficiencies and problem-solving. At the same time, it probably leads to the fierceness of fighting, because neighbors can go at it pretty good over policy issues. But overall, it is easier, per se, the City of South Haven and South Haven Charter Township to reach an agreement, just because people know each other and, you know, have some faith in each other. And you don't find that in big cities, so that's a strength that can be built off of. You have a competitive manufacturing base. It is small, but it's competitive, it's family-owned, and it's somewhat niche-oriented. It has been a hot button for the mayor, and it's something that he and I agree wholeheartedly on, that we have to push manufacturing and push it hard. A lot of people say, "Why are you doing that? All the manufacturers are in China, or Mexico, or something like that." In fact, the commodity manufacturers have done that, but the niche manufacturers are here in the United States. Their strengths are here in the United States. It's difficult to imagine Grant Spencer succeeding in China the way he can succeed in South Haven, Michigan, but my impression is he could succeed in China if he wanted to. But we need to build on the competitive manufacturing base, particularly if we're interested in the year-round economy. Weaknesses. See, I just started with four. It is perceived by many that the cost of living in South Haven is prohibitive, and at the beginning of the time that I was called upon to help South Haven, Brian had me do some comparisons with St. Joe and some other communities on water sewer hookup costs, and we are high. And it is a competitive disadvantage. So it's something that we need to look at down the road, and I've been talking to some financial institutions about how they might handle something like that, and have some ideas. We have weakness in local housing opportunities, but you probably already knew that. The Upjohn Institute has some data, and it's in our report, reproduced there as well, that shows that a house in South Haven is generally more expensive, on average, than other communities in Van Buren County. There's really no middle class here, and that's the area that we really need to shoot for when we talk about affordable housing. Those would be, in many cases, your production and service workers that do not or cannot commute from long distances, can't afford to commute from long distances. To some extent, there's an over-reliance on tourism. Talk to a lot of people, and they say, "Yeah, well, it doesn't matter what you do, this is always going to be a tourist town." Actually, it can be a lot more than that, but there's kind of a feeling there that this is what we are, and this is what we're going to be, and that's probably not the healthiest future to envision. Small business activity is somewhat anemic in Van Buren County. Between 2010 and 2019, we actually lost small businesses, the numbers. We did not gain any, and that's an area that's gonna have to be strengthened. Continuing on with the weaknesses, economic development is a hyper-competitive world. There's really no time to rest on laurels, because, as I used to say to my staff, "Okay, we won, let's celebrate 24 hours and then get back to it," because everybody else is back at it already. 23,000 entities competing for about 1,000 projects on the North American continent. So what are we doing to distinguish ourselves? And what are we thinking about in terms of how do we get better to compete in this mix? In tossing this idea around with a number of people, there's pretty much agreement that, "Well, we're really not trying that hard, but we could be good if we did, and my job is to help you get to that spot." Broadband. It's adequate, but it's not competitive. It's gotta get better, and we will talk about that a little bit later on. Perception of the public schools. It is not that the public schools here are bad, they're not. You just have the doubtful pleasure of competing against some of the best small public school systems in the state, Sagatuck being one of them, St. Joe being another one. When you're surrounded by that kind of competition, a lot of times, it grades off families pretty fast. The question for us is, what can we do to make the South Haven public schools more noticeable? Not necessarily better, because we are going to allow that they're good, but what can we do to distinguish the South Haven public schools to make it something that helps us attract families? Continuing on with the threats. We've covered the high cost of living. If we don't fix that, we are not going to grow the population base here, and we need to do that. I loved Lake Michigan on the first slide, now I'm not gonna love it so much. The high water levels, and I am also on the board of the Great Lakes Coalition, which is an organization that's been fighting with the International Joint Commission about water levels. But it's impacting, or will impact, tourism, the physical infrastructure like the marina. It's extra bucks out of the city budget to restore beaches and roads and other debris that have gathered. The Great Lakes Coalition has taken this from an argument now of homeowners that are along the lakeshore, and broadened it to include now cities like South Haven that are going to be profoundly impacted by high water levels, environmentally sensitive areas. There's a broad-based coalition now starting to come together, and a lot of people say, "Well, this is cyclical, this happens every 10 or 15 years," and it does. But there is also some human control in the inflows and outflows from the Great Lakes, and this is regulated by the International Joint Commission, which has had a lot of angry people in front of their headquarters the past two weeks in Washington, D.C. Closure of the nuclear power plant is a threat, because a cash-strapped county may consolidate services that are available here in South Haven in a more frugal location or centralized location. And I've heard the city manager say many times, "The last thing he wants is for people in South Haven to have to drive 30 miles to access county services." We think that's a negative. Continuing on with threats, community healthcare. You have a new hospital. The footprint will be about two-thirds the size of the previous hospital, but we need to bear down and create a relationship with Bronson that's very, very close. There are a number of reasons for this, one of which will be a target strategy that I'll recommend to you later on, but you do not, repeat, do not want to lose a hospital under any circumstances. In some groups, I've indicated to them that I'm from the City of Alvion, I was born and raised there. There are no public schools there now, and there's no community hospital, and if it wasn't for Alvion College, there probably wouldn't be an Alvion there right now. We don't want to see South Haven go down that path at all. Your lack of population density in Van Buren County makes it a little bit difficult to attract specialists, and at the same time, we've got some turbulence in that, in the overall environment, because Spectrum has reached over everything and acquired Lakeland down in Benton Harbor-St. Joe. And I used to sit on the Borges Board in Kalamazoo, and if there was anything in this world that brought Borges and Bronson together as friends and allies, it was Spectrum. It's a giant system, and I am pretty certain that people in Bronson are looking up occasionally when they're thinking about South Haven and what Spectrum might be doing. Lack of industrial and business sites. We've been through that several times. It's been kind of a priority of the mayor to try and get her act together and develop some sort of a system, and that, too, we're going to recommend to you. It's a lack of a community education strategy, in the sense that, you know, you've heard of the Kalamazoo Promise, and the Battle Creek Legacy Scholars, and the Muskegon Area First Scholars, and that kind of thing. There really needs to be some more thinking, I think, in this community about what the community's strategy really is, and you wanna drive educational attainment levels, and South Haven's already pretty well off compared to other communities in Van Buren County. There's a high level of educational attainment here. But you wanna keep that up, and you also wanna try and create a loop whereby the young people that you graduate eventually do come back to the community. They're going to leave, and there's not much you can do about that, that's what young people do, but they do come back, and the likelihood of them coming back is much greater if the community is someplace where they wanna raise a family or live out the rest of their lives. So there needs to be, I think, some more aggressive partnering between the South Haven Public Schools, Lake Michigan College, and the vocational technical center operation, which is pretty outstanding in this county. Finally, changes in the world energy supply. When this report was being written, Iran, we think it was Iran, had hit the Saudi oil refinery facilities in a drone attack. This introduces a little bit of volatility into that tourism pursuit, and many of the price-point people believe that once gas reaches $4 a gallon, as it is in California, by the way, this will start to impact the tourism traffic in a negative way. People living closer in may come to South Haven for a day or two, but if you're here in the summertime, and you all are here in the summertime, you see those plates from Ohio, Missouri, Kentucky, those people are probably going to stay closer to home in a $4 an hour, or $4 a gallon economy. Autonomous transportation and artificial intelligence. If you haven't seen the plan, in the back, the very first article in there is an interview with the chairman of Daimler Chrysler, and it's quite interesting, and the changes that are going to occur in the next five to 10 years. are going to occur in the next five to 10 years. One of the things that I hope comes out of this whole presentation is that we don't have to react to things that we think are going to happen in the future. In fact, we're a lot smarter if we act now or proact on those things. Autonomous transportation is going to have a huge impact on a city that derives a great deal of revenue from beach marketing. And in many ways, cities, their landscape is going to be rewritten just because of autonomous transportation. In the article, the chairman of Daimler thinks that there's 15 basic industries that are going to be disrupted over the next 10 years. So think about your community, think about changes that are coming. As a Colonel in the Defense Logistics Agency said to me once, "It's better to be the steamroller than the road when it comes to change." So let's figure out how to make South Haven a steamroller. The last threat is the loss of the community philanthropy of energy. These people have really been good. Blueberry Festival, a number of other things, the fireworks display. When they go, that part's going to be noticed. And many communities, when they lose a major employer benefactor, work through their community foundations and set up, and I would say in this case, a fund for South Haven where people can make donations, particularly this time of the year, to help continue to finance community events in the absence of a corporate benefactor. So you won't see anything immediate this year or next year, but as that operation phases down, it's going to be harder and harder to draw the philanthropic dollars from the opportunities. The attraction of workers and families and businesses for that matter, but this is the heart of the matter. We'll be talking a little bit more about website marketing, but we've got to get housing into this mix, we've got to get broadband into this mix. Again, in the backup material that's in the plan, you'll read about Tulsa, Oklahoma, who is actually paying people to move there. Other communities are offering to pay off student debt for recently graduated students if they would come into the community and commit to work there for five years or so. When I first started this business, I worked for the University of Missouri and there was a program there that paid doctors, offset some of their tuition costs in return for a commitment to practice in a rural area where people had no medical care or healthcare. Communities are beginning to adopt that model generally, not for specific competencies, but generally, just to bring people in. And I'm not saying we need to go there yet because we've got quite a few assets that Tulsa, Oklahoma can only dream about. Attraction of the anywheres. And this comes back to the first point I made about significant changes in the way the US workforce is deployed. About 62% of the US workforce now can work anywhere. Anywhere they can plug in a computer or have a Wi-Fi system. We call that location indifference. They can work anywhere. This probably means some good things for rural areas as the entrepreneurs, the gig workers find that they prefer to have the peace of the rural setting and natural assets as opposed to lots of concrete. So as part of our recommendation for future strategies, we are recommending that we go after the anywheres because they will fit well here and some already do. Recharge tourism a little bit. I've had some discussions with Scott way back when I teamed up with Holland and Grand Rapids to do some community advertising in downtown Chicago. This was many years ago, in a downtown bank. What we found out was with all the pretty pictures of Holland and everything, that people didn't like to vacation where they worked or they didn't like to work where they were vacationing. Since then, people have found the need to be connected so they can work anywhere. And I have said to Scott, I think that in bringing people into town, we need to make people aware of the investment opportunities, the living opportunities, the quality of life in South Haven. How can we fuse a strategy of attracting investment to a strategy of attracting tourists? Brian and the mayor know from a previous experience with a German company whom they convinced to locate here in South Haven. They said, "We've been here on vacation, we like this community." It was a good first step and if we can work with Scott a little bit to add that extra finger, I think, to the South Haven package, I think it's a good way to do some community marketing. Small business development. I mentioned earlier that it was a weakness that we had lost small businesses. We may already have got a fix for this problem. Again, running around the community and meeting people, we came upon a lady who lives here, lived here for three years, a computer science person who developed her own company and sold it for a lot of money, now just does small business consulting. She lives here in South Haven and she was looking for something to do. And we ran across her in the beginning in about January. She will probably begin service, if this gets worked out with the city, through something called the Service Corps of Retired Executives. And those are successful executives who've had good careers, who have wisdom and experience and are able to pass that on to people that are starting their own companies or need some help because they're operating a company and have developed some problems. That kind of expertise is readily available here in South Haven. We have to figure out a way to mobilize it and get it into the forefront. Immigration. Some communities have gone to partnering with churches in the communities to sponsor limited immigration in. Again, that happened in south-central Michigan with the Myanmar peoples, Burmese as we used to call them. They have been good for the labor shortage. They have been good for the entry-level positions. The only complaint I've heard about them is that after three or four years on the job, they get so well-skilled, they go out and start their own businesses and the employer has to start over with a new employee. So limited immigration is a possibility. Target industries. Water-based technology, obviously. We're surrounded by it. We sell it to businesses. There's a great deal of manufacturing, service, et cetera, associated with water. And lost in the debate over climate change and fossil fuels and everything else is the growing contamination of the freshwater supply in the United States. It is something that continues to happen even though people know it's happening. If this community ever wanted to stand for something, stick the flag in the ground, that flag should say, "South Haven champions freshwater, fresh clean water." We've got the infrastructure for it, we've got the big lake and we've got some industries that need it and will, because they operate in other areas of the country, have to look in this direction sooner or later for production. Marine technology. Marine technology education. Right now, Alpena Community College and Northwest Michigan College are two institutions that have that kind of a curriculum. There's nothing down in the southwest corner. We understand that it's not exactly cost-effective to start up a program like this, but there's a great deal of potential down the road. And it is, as some of the reports have indicated, the one that Edgewater did for you on the harbor, these are really good-paying jobs and they bring a lot of revenue into the community. And given the paucity of that kind of curriculum and that kind of training in this area, there's an opportunity for South Haven. Obviously, food processing. The area flexes its muscle in that right and left. One area that might be useful as far as the prolonging of food processing and food production is the suppression of ethylene gas. And without being a political science major, I don't like to wander into too much science because you'll quickly gain the conclusion that I do not know what I'm talking about and you'll be right. But all fruits and vegetables give off gas in a ripening process. There's a process out there, it's now, it's in Michigan, it's actually north of Grand Rapids, but it's a warehouse where the ethylene gas that's emitted from apples is suppressed and those apples stay fresh year-round. So it's possible for this warehouse to deliver a designer-grown apple from an orchard in Eau Claire to a restaurant in downtown Chicago that's as fresh as the day it was pulled off the vine. I had a little discussion with Ross about this because he knows blueberries and of course it'd be just our luck that blueberries give off the least ethylene gas of all fruits and vegetables to be grown. But still, others, other products are produced in this area and there could be an opportunity for year-round supply and distribution. Finally, I think that we've got to look hard at telemedicine and telehealth. Again, going back to what we said earlier about weaknesses and lack of density to attract specialists, a lot of communities are bridging that gap by having extremely good broadband. Way back in 1991, I visited the province of New Brunswick in Canada. It's a rural province, it was very poor. They had an enlightened leader. One of the things he did was solar fiber optic infrastructure in the entire province and that was way back then. They went from some of the lowest small business formation rates to the best in Canada, from the lowest literacy rates to the best in Canada. Healthcare became attainable for people living in the rural area. If you had a heart condition, for example, they'd give you a suitcase and send you home and tell you every hour or so, hook that up your telephone line so the hospital can see how you're doing. That was 1991. We are way beyond that now, but there are a lot of opportunities there and this is one thing that we really need to sit down and talk to Bronson Hospital about. Not only do we seek better health for the residents of the community here, but we're also seeking marketable technologies that might help other communities solve the same So from opportunities to strategic goals, only this one's more of a tactical goal. I'm gathering that the city of South Haven wants to establish an economic development program. Let's get on with it. What's it look like? Probably between now and middle of January, I hope we'll have some RFPs out to Lakeshore Advantage, maybe Cornerstone Alliance, Market Van Buren and see who's interested in doing the work for South Haven and what the cost of that might be. There is a fourth option and that is it continues to be done in-house. I'm a little bit concerned because Brian and Kate have their plates full and this really does take a focused and sustained effort. They do, they do very, very well though with the resources and the time that they have, but if you want to be serious about this, I think you need somebody that's got their nose to the ground all the time. So in the best of worlds, we'd like to have that question answered by the end of March, you know, who does it and how? Second strategic goal, improve city broadband. This has to be done. And again, in your follow-up materials, backup materials, you'll see that we've identified grants, grant programs. It's going to take a little bending from the telecoms and they don't like to do that. But I think once you combine South Haven's quality of life assets with a very robust broadband system, you're going to attract those anywheres. They're going to come here because of what you've got to offer. We've got to make sure though that they can do their work as competitively as possible. Why is broadband important? You'll see this in the report. This is a model for a city of 20,000 people, so I've scaled it down, but home-based businesses and online sales can account for almost 700,000 new dollars coming into the South Haven economy. Teleworkers will save well over $500 a year annually in car maintenance costs and gasoline. An interesting one up there also is that 30% of tourist transactions are now done online. So the more we are equipped to handle that, the better off our tourism will be. There's discussion here about healthcare. Telemedicine or telehealth, as I was talking to earlier, can bring about 130,000 new dollars into the community. Doesn't seem like much, but that's probably a base figure that will grow when other costs are added in with it. So I regard this tactical goal as a non-negotiable. We've got to go after it. We've got to put every thumb on the scale that we can to get this done. One of the first things, the city's already had some contact with some of the telecom producers that operate in this area, what we've got to do is figure out now what it would take to equip this community to be fully 5G with a platform that can adapt to new technology in the future. But this is way, way important. In my time as an economic developer, which is quite a while now, this has become every bit as important to business as water and sewer, waste refusal. So let's figure out how to get it done here. Next goal, develop industrial and business sites, completion date 2021, but that's an ongoing system. This means you've got to have somebody looking for land, somebody that knows how to acquire it, the resources to acquire it, the marketing of it through an online format, the updating of what you've got on that online format. It necessitates accommodations with the Realtor community. I've worked with them, they're interested in selling land or selling. Economic developers are a little more interested in project of which land is a part, but not the whole thing. But nonetheless, we've got to gain their confidence in bringing forth sites to us that can be occupied by business for growth. Most of my life was spent working in Forest Huster where we had thousands of acres. A business would come to me and say, "I need five acres." And I'd say, "Which of these sites would you like?" Somebody says, "We need five acres in South Haven." We are all looking hard to find an appropriate site. So anytime we can get ahold of an appropriate site, we need to do that. And the person that's going to be doing this needs to pay attention because site selectors are looking at these two from afar and they will be looking for suitable sites and they need to be well-presented. This will be Jeremy's favorite one here. Development and implementation of an area workforce strategy. As the mayor will attest, we've had meeting after meeting trying to figure out how to meet the needs of our South Haven employer community and we will continue to do this. There will be, I think, a number of discussions in the early part of the year over how we proceed, but my suggestion is, and if you look in your packages again, you'll see a workforce participation rate number of 51%, which means that the able-bodied population in South Haven are those capable of working. Only 51% of them hold jobs. Now, you can shake that statistic out a little bit, you know, a disabled veteran would be in that category. But someplace in South Haven, Michigan, there's about 45 to 60 people who are able to work but who are not working. And we need to know what it takes to get them into the workforce. How do you recruit, screen and train people to occupy positions in home-based industry here? So with a 51% workforce participation rate, state of Michigan, by the way, 62%. Van Buren County's about 61%. So we're well below that. And I think with connexus, like Michigan College, possibly the public schools, we need to sit down and have a good look at that number, very likely the Upjohn Institute as well, and figure out a program by which we can reach these and figure out a program by which we can reach these people and get them into gainful employment, and then build on that. I told Jeremy once that I wanted the city of South Haven to be in a position when they're talking to a Grant Spencer or to somebody from the outside, "Yeah, we can recruit, screen, and train 30 workers to your specifications, and we'll do it for you." Because it's important to us that our people have jobs and that they pay taxes. It's important to you because you need the production workload. So let's have a strategy in place by 2021, and then let's squeeze it and make it work in the subsequent years following that. Family worker business attraction strategy in marketing, housing, recreation. These are all things that would be important to families and workers, affordable housing in particular. I talked about, at the beginning, about the, the high cost of water and sewer hookup. I sit on a bank board, so I gathered some of those people together and said, "What can South Haven do, and what can you do to make, like, home buying in South Haven easier?" It is possible for a bank to roll those costs, water and sewer hookup, into a mortgage so that you don't feel that, that pain of the initial outlay. They do it in the construction industry all the time. Why they can't do it in residential is beyond me, but the people I've talked to say that they can, and they would be willing to do that. Finally, goes without saying, promote year-round activities. One of the concepts that we did come up with is the Cerritos Library, and you look at this and you go, "Wow, that's way out of South Haven's park." Yeah, it is. It's a $65 million facility, and we're not going to duplicate it here very easily. But it is an experiential learning center. There's nothing like it in California, except for Cerritos now. There's over 400 computer portals there, and they're occupied most of the time. People will travel up to 90 miles to go to this place. Think about it in South Haven's terms, much smaller, but maybe a Great Lakes Aquarium or, or a Fresh Water, Center for Fresh Water Studies or something like that that would draw people to the area. The library situation here is in a little bit of a flux. I've looked at their drawings, and they've got a great project going forward, but there might be an opportunity to link them, the museum, together and come up with something that's really unique for this part of the country. There's nothing like this in the state of Michigan. In the material that you have been supplied, there's a website you can go to to find how this whole thing really works. Many years ago, the Two Kellogg's, the foundation and the company, hired me to figure out what to do with a failed cereal museum in downtown Battle Creek, and this was one of the things that was recommended. Our library was well underway with a bond issue over something else and didn't want to be bothered by it, but to this day, I'm convinced that Battle Creek missed a big opportunity, having an available building like that that had some futuristic design built in that could have served as a learning center. So obviously, that's the, you know, that's the home run you want to hit, but if you think about a center like that, you can also think about beaming in skilled training, ubiquitous education for anybody in the community that wants to upskill on something, there ought to be a way for them to do it. And I've already mentioned the possibility of water quality studies or something like that. But there has to be a catch here besides building up manufacturing to attract people in the off-tourist season. And it's kind of a mixed bag, because when you talk to people, they say, "Well, God, I'm glad it's over. Now I can rest and relax a little while." But we're talking about continuing an effort on here to have a year-round economy, and that means that while that summer madness that takes place here dies down, there's still a lot of work that could and should be done in the off-season if you're going to have a well-rounded community, and that's where we'll be focusing our efforts. So I've talked for an hour now. I will try and answer any questions that you may have. Just one summary statement, as I said at the beginning, there's no silver bullet here, but we may find one, given everything that's in front of us and the work that needs to be done. But at this point, it's your floor, and I'll try and answer any questions and absorb any comments you may have.
Joe, are you there? Joe, I know you've got some questions that you were hoping to ask Jim.
Yes, Jim. My question is this. Last summer, we had, during the speaker series, a gentleman who was a bit of an expert about the Great Lakes, and he talked about the balancing of water in the lake and the amount of water that could be taken out by certain specific cities. And my question is this, with a lake reaching such high, and destruction stealing the people's homes, and it could ruin our beaches and affect tourism, what is the possibility of the, I don't know.
Oh, it's the International Joint Commission or the Lake, uh, Great Lakes Coalition?
But there isn't controls over how much water, for example, Chicago could take a week or a month or a year. And my understanding is this organization that's going to the federal government and asks for an exception, allow more water to be taken out, specifically drinking water for Chicago and these other cities to bring the water level down. Where does this come in with that?
Right now, you have a grand total of 13 inflows to Lake Superior, Lake Michigan and Lake Huron. Right now, only six of them are operating, but that's bad enough because just those six alone dump over 30,000 cubic feet of water from Lake Superior into Lake Michigan The evaporation hasn't occurred, the rainfall and snowfall has. To that extent, we're not able to control what's going on, but with those inflows and outflows, and you mentioned the one in Chicago, Joe, that one's not going to work right now because the lower Mississippi is flooded. Even the cruise ships that go up and down the Mississippi, the summer cruises there haven't been able to operate because they can't get under the bridges, they're sitting so high in the water. So that option is off the table right now, but there are outflows through the Niagara River and the St. Lawrence River, and what people in Michigan, and increasingly now, people in Canada are trying to do is get the International Joint Commission to open up those outflows and, and send that water out through the Niagara and, and St. Lawrence You wouldn't have this situation if somebody wasn't benefiting from it. So the Canadian steel industry, agricultural industry benefit because you can load those ships. The deep-water mark can enable you to reduce the number of, you know, it's $30,000 an hour to operate one of those big ore carriers. So if you're going to operate one, you better keep it busy and keep it full. And they have been able to accomplish supply of their mills with about a third of the number of ships that they've used in the past, just because you can fill them deeper. And the same for grain coming out of the Canadian Prairie Provinces, Alberta, Saskatchewan, and Manitoba. And then you have the Ontario Hydro-Elektric community that's benefiting from the high waters. So there's a lot going on there, Joe, in terms of, of give and take over what the water levels should be, but they're clearly too high for Michigan. Counties up and down the lakeshore now are seeking disaster relief. Everybody's feeling it. It's gone from a case of impacting homeowners, to somebody said a bunch of rich whiners that built too close to the lakeshore. Now we're talking about whole cities, national parks disappearing. So the issue's gotten much bigger than that. They have got to exercise the outflow options to bring the water levels down at least six inches. Otherwise, we're going to see maybe a repeat of last summer and possibly an inch or two more water than we had last summer. So it's a very complex problem, but fortunately, I think with the damage and destruction being done, people are suddenly starting to understand that there is a little bit of human control here, and we need to exercise it as much as possible. Kate and I are generating a letter to go from the South Haven Harbor Commission to the International Joint Commission, discussing the problems the city of South Haven has and the unforeseen costs that, that the high water levels are going to have on the community. And we hope that a number of other Michigan communities, and Michigan Municipal League has been energized, but we hope a number of other communities will join this effort and let the decision-makers know this goes well beyond people who live on the lakeshore, but whole communities are being impacted now.
Members of council, questions?
I've got a few. Fire away. Some of them may just be clarification in the report itself. One of them may be my, my misunderstanding of, in the report, it talks households, and then it also talks residents, resident percentage. What's the difference defined by you in that?
Residents are people that live here year-round. Households may not be that.
Okay, so a household could be part-time or summertime only. Okay. And then on page 119 in the report, I think it's part of the Upjohn statistics, it says service-producing jobs were 70.5% of the employment in Van Buren County. Out of the nine service-providing jobs, only three groups have seen an increase in the time period between 2005 and 2018. They include professional and business services, educational and health, and leisure and hospitality. Yet on page 120, it shows manufacturing is up 8.2% from just 2010 to now. That's a 1% point in eight years, where professional and business services, you show it down 19.1%. Yet on page 119, it shows an increase of 2.5%. So I'm a little confused on the Upjohn numbers on them pages, if we can clarify that.
I'm confused, too. I know what you're talking about.
It's page 119 and page 120 where you got a graphic, and then you got the, the numbers. The other question I have is on page 123, and I don't have the, the report in front of me, but it shows that Van Buren County itself is lacking $334 per week in pay compared to the state of Michigan means. I was wondering if it'd be possible to get a weekly number for South Haven rather than just Van Buren County. I think that would be much more helpful to us because if South Haven is minus $334 per week in pay, we can build all the workforce housing we want. Nobody's going to want to come here and work. So that would be an important number for me to see if we can't get that number from Van Buren County more designated into the South Haven area itself.
I think we asked them for that at the last presentation. They're already working on getting that.
Okay.
As, as we go forward, Councilman, you'll be working with the Upjohn Institute on some data stuff anyway, and as Patricia just said, we asked them about that very same issue, so.
Super.
We're in the, we're in the game together here.
The other, the other, the last thing I have is I'd like a little clarity on this. The interesting talk with the head of Daimler Benz, that report can be kind of scary.
Yeah.
If you misinterpret it.
Yeah.
So I was wondering who the author of that was and when was that? It states none of that information on that page.
It's from May 2015, and I will, I can, I'll get to the city manager, the author of that article. But that's why you should read it. It's, it is scary.
Yeah, and if it's misinterpreted, it can may steer, steer some people in, in the wrong direction, in my opinion, so. With that, that's all I have. Thank you. Very nice presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the LDFA Board, Jim just made a point. He talked about the Upjohn Institute. Part of the data that is built into Jim's report is coming from the Upjohn Institute. In addition to what Jim is presenting tonight, we'll be working for another two and a half years with the Upjohn Institute. The team from Upjohn is continuing to track everything that would fall under essentially a community health score. On a monthly basis, they're tracking the total number of new housing going into the South Haven area. They're tracking school enrollment, they're tracking hospital enrollment, and on and on. The intent is over a three-year period for the Upjohn Institute to help the city council, the LDFA, and just community members understand what's going right, what's going wrong. Our hope is, over that three-year period, it can help guide some of the decision-making on social issues so that we are moving in a direction that provides just optimum community health. So when you hear Steve ask questions about some of that data coming from Upjohn, don't be shy. Send those questions to me. Over the last probably 45 days, we've sent easily 20 questions over to the Upjohn Institute folks, just asking for greater clarity. And occasionally, I'll pull members of our planning commission, our LDFA, our city council, into meetings to speak directly with the economists. Mike's in the back, last Friday, Mike Neese from our planning commission spent an hour having lunch with a couple of economists because he had many questions that I wanted him to ask directly of them. I can guarantee you, you're always going to have a lunchtime with Upjohn folks, but I can guarantee you, if you send me your questions, we'll work our best to get you Mr. Chairman of the LDFA, are there any questions that you'd like to, to ask?
I don't have any specifics, except I, you mentioned the silver bullet a couple of times, and I'd, I'd be interested, what would be a silver bullet as an example of something that might generate this kind of?
In 1899, it was a cornflake. And one time, there were 80 companies in Battle Creek making, making cereal. There was a growth trajectory that was out of this world, and, you know, with it comes support industries, finance, everything, hospitality, more recently, the silicone chip. Those are pretty, pretty substantial silver bullets. In most cases, they're discovered by accident, but they're things that people do every day. And one of the questions on the survey, and you may recall this, was, you know, "Do you know of somebody in South Haven who's doing something that's not done anyplace else? Or do you know somebody in South Haven who's doing something better than anybody anyplace else?" We never really got good answers to that, but we had a couple people take a swing at it. But it's something that's keeping the forefront of your mind at, at all times, because, like I said, it could be just a pure accident that causes it to happen. I mean, the Two Kellogg brothers got preoccupied, and they walked away, and when they walked away, their, their problem fixed itself. It dried out, and, you know, flakes appeared. So, you know.
Three pretzels.
You know, think about, think about the assets here. Again, the, the water, the proximity to urban centers. What do we have here that's unique, that once you package it up, is something that nobody else has, that, that has value? We'll keep looking for that, because if you're trying to, I think, exist in economic development over the long, oh, you got to keep an eye on the possibility that something once in a lifetime may, may pop up, and you better be there to fully take advantage of it. I don't know what that is, but, but we'll keep looking.
Members of the LDFA Board, any, any other questions? Mr. Mayor, what about the public? We've got a whole lot of people sitting here.
Absolutely. Let's listen, and then.
Members of the public, you've all sat through a lengthy presentation. Are there any questions that anyone would like to ask of Jim or his team?
I don't know.
When you see the demographics, which I'm sure you study pretty dramatically, as a resident, when I see there are more and more senior citizens or approaching senior citizens, which tend to have more wealth, and they're not bringing in new jobs, there may be service requirements that they, but is there going to be enough there over time to sustain a community our size where realistically, you probably need a more robust middle-class Spencer Industries, et cetera, to, to... Spencer Industries, et cetera, to even all that out? After having lived here for thirteen years, that's what I see, more and more older people, less and less younger families.
And that's, that's not all bad. If you look, again, at traditional economic development literature, an aging economy, an aging community is not a good thing in that literature. But if you look at the aging of South Haven, it's not that young people are leaving and that's driving the age up, it's that senior citizens are moving into South Haven. They find it to be a senior-friendly community. And as I said earlier, they bring talent, wealth, and in many cases, good health. They've got a lot to contribute to a community, and there needs to be more organized outreach to take advantage of, really, the wealth that's in people's heads that live in this town. And Patricia and I did this presentation at the Rotary Club, and a couple of people came up to me that I knew from my years in Battle Creek, who are presidents of companies, retired over here, but they're still young, so to speak, interested in doing things, obviously the membership in the Rotary Club and taking on projects through that. It's really kind of a wealth factor, and it runs against the grain of community development. But I think there's a great deal of benefit to be had from properly organizing and tapping the senior crowd in South Haven for things like small business assistance, better libraries, things like that. Those are things that the senior population's interested in, and the city's catered well to them with the walkways, pedestrian walkways. There's a whole body of literature out there that talks about other communities that deliberately try to attract senior citizens, some of the things they do, making their sidewalk cleaner, for example, and then marketing that to the outside. And if you're old like me, you get the AARP monthly bulletin. If you look in the one that came yesterday, it's, these are the ten best cities for seniors to live in, and, you know, most of them are trying to attract seniors. And as I said to the mayor on occasion, somebody wants to move into my town, and they've got money, brains, and expertise, and want to donate it, you're going to see nothing but welcome mats. It's kind of an interpretation. We're taking the pro-South Haven in that the aging community is a good thing. We've got a number, and we do have a number of distinguished people living here, and the small business solution we found just kind of blew my mind. It was right here under our noses, and I think by the middle of 2020, we're going to have a program up and running, and people with time on their hands are going to be asked to help.
Just to follow up on that, South Haven just, in about a ten-year period, has gone from approximate taxable value of about three hundred and fifty million to we've now exceeded a half a billion dollars worth of just taxable value. I remind the council on a regular basis that communities to the east of us would kill for that. What you're not facing as a community is cuts to service, what you're not facing is layoffs, what we're not facing is regular and repeated increase in taxes to try and cover costs. That's the benefit. Now, the downside is, our census data is quickly showing us that we are very much aging in place. One of the things that Jim and the Upjohn folks agreed to pursue is targeting people in their late twenties to mid to late thirties, trying to figure out, you know, if they were originally from here, what brings them back, or alternatively, what's pushed them away. And that's something that later this week, we'll be working on assembling a list and having those economists that are working for us for the next few years, going out and doing some very direct outreach to figure out what we're doing right and wrong as it relates to some of the younger folks.
And that connects right into our work we're doing with housing already, because we've heard from a lot of businesses that have people that, we have people commuting into our town because they can't afford to be here. We'd love for them to be here. We love those kids in our schools, so it all, this all is a fascinating web that connects.
Mr. Mayor, we had a couple other hands go up.
I got a question, and my question comes more from pastoral background. In the presentation, you list the several strengths in South Haven. One strength I didn't see up there, which I think probably could be a strength, is a strong religion-based community, strong religion-based community. My question is, what role do you foresee the church playing in economic development, especially with the closing, future closing of plants like here to you?
You'll be pleased with the full report, because we do deal with that in there. Do you want to say anything, Patricia? Because you were...
Yeah. I got to facilitate an outstanding discussion with a group of ministers in the town. I would have loved to have seen you there. I'm sorry that I didn't get a chance to meet you. They were incredibly helpful. They brought Wee Care with them as well. They distributed that information in the survey out to the rest of the group that wasn't able to be, and you'll be surprised what people will say if they're a room with that. We went to that group, that was one of the first groups, because we know that the ministerial groups have the largest microphones and the largest voices. Some of the comments that were brought in there were unlike most of the comments that we receive, particularly from the black community, because a lot of it is, you know, there's nothing here for us, that sort of thing. So, they're just getting into those discussions. Some of the discussions we took off-site from that, because some of the things that people didn't want to say necessarily in a room. This is one of the most organized communities when it comes to all the different church groups. There is very little needs that are not being met from those groups. I have personally not seen that sort of collaboration in the other community. You're absolutely right. That's a huge, huge strength, and we talk about that in the full report. So, to answer your second part of your question, after the discussions that we've had, absolutely that the churches do need you to have a part in that, because you're the line to the communities. The downside to that is, because of the decline in population, the memberships are going down, which hurts those as well. So, you know, it's, when you have memberships going down, you have less donations going in, less hands to help, and those sort of things. So, it definitely goes hand in hand.
And I think the, go back to the literature of economic development, maybe first base in the urban community is the black church, big than the ones that have really initiated a lot of urban enterprise. And I'm hopeful that once we get a small business development program underway here and accessible to people, that we can work with you for any members that you may know that want to start businesses or need some assistance in growing their businesses. We want that to be available to them on their time, not on ours, on their time. Thank you for that, because we spent a lot of time on that in the report, and I should have mentioned it in the presentation.
I think Russell Lee is there.
I just had one question and kind of one observation. One number that really jumped out was, I think you said sixty-two percent of the people can work remotely, or, you know, through the disguise of the internet.
We don't.
And so, obviously broadband is a problem, and I guess this is going to be the challenge to the council, is how fast can we make this happen? I don't understand the mechanics of all that, obviously, but that seems to be at the very, very heart of how we can push forward, because I think we have, as a city, what to sell. I do. We've got the beauty of South Haven. So, if sixty-two percent of the people are working remotely and they could live here, I mean, to me, that seems like a really, to me, that almost seems time to answer your silver bullet, get the broadband up as quickly as possible. Is that even something?
Say something to that. After, shortly after the report came out, my business was contacted by a young man that is close to my age, probably a little bit younger, has a second home here. He lives in Chicago, and he would kill to live in South Haven. That is his dream. His dad stays in the house for him here while he's in Chicago, but he works remote, and the reason that he's not here full-time is that specific thing. And so, he just pleaded on this email, like, please, please, please make sure that my voice is heard, and that's why I'm saying that, that, you know, you have people that are already investing here, and they would, they're just one foot in. They would jump hole if they had the ability to also, their quality of life and their income is so important to be able to do that, right? So, yeah.
And while we're talking about bringing people in, Cook County's losing a hundred and sixty-one people a day. Not sure we want everybody from Cook County, but...
We don't.
Hey, watch out. There is some high taxes.
No more Cubs fans.
And as an IT professional, I guess that would be something I would want to investigate as well, because I've probably worked remotely for twelve or fifteen years in multiple places in South Haven. I've never had a problem having broadband for the last ten or twelve years. So, identifying what that means and where those locations are, because of Comcast being pretty much everywhere, I mean, I've got blazing fast internet, and I don't even, you know, I don't even have cable TV, everything is just, and that's been in the South Haven for five or six years for us. So, that'll be interesting to find out more about.
It's almost like you need a coalition of individuals to focus and work on that and to problem-solve, you know, through that. You know, what area do you live in? You know, it just depends on the terrain.
Part of it's the city, city versus the larger city area of South Haven.
I know sometimes when people get closer to the water, it tends to get harder for them, so it just sits, it just sits strange.
Well, talking about airwaves versus...
Yeah, but some people's phones are internet-based, too.
Typical internet access.
Well, we only get, with Comcast here, we can only get usually seventy-five meg. A lot of new apps and stuff are requiring two hundred or more, and that's four gigabyte, and Comcast will offer it, but they won't offer it here. But Bloomingdale Communications is a company that's not far away that works on a fiber ring, and they're trying to come in here, and I think that would be the option in the future, because the smaller companies could be more excited to fix those things, so...
Point me in a direction. I'll begin crawling there right now. That's the way we got it done in Battle Creek. The big telecoms told us to go fly a kite. We found a small family-owned business called Climax Telephone, Climax, Michigan. They're now the largest owner of fiber in West Michigan.
Mr. Mayor, other questions?
Does anybody else have questions? I would just, I guess, I just would say to Jim, you, Patricia, thank you, because it's great information. I think we've, see, we've had a lot of thoughts, a lot of ideas. We all recognize the importance of growing the economy. Broadband's a great, you know, thought. We know we need housing, we know we need a year-round economy, we need to attract families. It all connects with things to do, good schools, there's, you know, it all goes together. I don't want to pretend for a moment, I love the thought of silver bullets, but I also am a realist, and I know that this is a process. It's work, and I think people need to kind of accept that this is a beginning of a process, and there's a lot of input that's going to need to happen, and we're, you know, our eyes are on all those different things. So, come join us. This is, you know, the start of a process, and we're going to be looking for as many, you know, tools for this tool belt we can go for. So, I guess I'd just say I'm up for the challenge, so...
That's amazing.
Join us.
This has been a great experience for us. No community works like you guys work. You need to recognize that. That is a huge benefit. Leadership was on there. Yeah, just to have that sort of, hearing the truth is very hard, and sometimes you hear things that you don't want to hear because you're in the trees and you can't see the forest that I'm, so just being as gracious as you all have been for us to be able to do our jobs, I just wanted to say thank you for that. It's been a really great year.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I just had one comment that I, I wanted to make sure I got in. Being a seventy-year-old person in this area and thinking that I'll be around here quite a while yet, mainly because I work in a wellness center that keeps us wealthy and healthy, I would like to see an emphasis with what we already have, which is, if we have an aging population, work toward making their life the life of the retirement population, as well as people in their close to that, as the best life as possible. And I think that will draw a lot more people from around the area, as well as, you know, let's make their life, let's have their healthcare be as low as possible because we can keep them healthy. I know we, you mentioned the trails and all these, these things that are available. We really need to get that publicized and encouraged to get people off their couch, make, give many, give people as many ways as possible to become healthier, and then also maybe, as I say, I think they'll bring their families here. So, that's just, that's the only...
From one seventy-year-old to another, I agree with you.
I think, you know, I tend to be around for a long time, but I think it's kind of a secret that it's a possibility, that, you know, you still, and as I say, we have, I work at the wellness center, I know we have good doctors in the area, too, and there's free exercises in many places, there's, you know, the senior center has many services for people. I would like to see, you know, as I say, take what's already being attracted here and see if we can expand on it. So, that's all.
Mr. Chair, are you at a point where you're ready to adjourn your board meeting?
Yes. Unless anyone else has comments or anything?
So, we'd need a motion to adjourn your board meeting.
I moved that we adjourn our board meeting.
Is there a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, for the last time.
For the last one.
Second.
All right. Motion second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody, for coming.
Thank you.